I believe we have another report. Next item, please, Madam Secretary.
Next item is remote instruction in middle school. Ms. Saffoni-Faraj, Ms. Reema Yunus.
Good evening, Dr. Maleko, President Berry, trustees, and the A D people watching online. We're here again today to talk about partially the remote learning and a couple of requirements that we have to do every month, which is continually evaluate the learning and looking at how students are learning and ensuring that students are exposed to grade level instruction. Whether it's synchronous or asynchronous learning, we have to examine how they are learning, determine what the challenges are, what the successes are, and tweak our practices to make sure that we are meeting all students' needs. So today, we're talking specifically about adjusting the middle school schedule. What we did is we put together a teachers committee and the principals, and we had a few meetings to discuss what kind of hardships the students, the parents, and the teachers are having. And the teachers reflected on their experience when we had to do Zoom sessions for all six classes versus when they are teaching three classes synchronously, which is through live Zoom sessions, and three classes asynchronously when the students are assigned work to do independently. Again, the ECO plan that we submitted to M D E and the state, which stands for Extended Continuity of Learning, and again, we revisit the plan, we resubmit it every month, five days after the board meeting. And that states that academic standards that we use with the students and are supposed to be grade level standards, and students need to show progress toward mastery of those standards. Today, we have three wonderful people that will be presenting the outcomes of those meetings and how we are going to be looking at the middle school schedule moving forward. Ms. Stephanie Sorensen, Mr. James Radcliffe, and Ms. Reema Yunus will go over the details, and we will answer any questions that you may have after that. Ms. Yunus?
Good afternoon, Board of Education, President Berry, Dr. Maleko. Thanks for having us here today. We just kind of wanted to go over, you know, just what we have been experiencing through the asynchronous instruction. And we have, you know, high number of students that are really performing one to three years below grade level. And the absence of teacher scaffolding during asynchronous instruction really leaves students and parents feeling frustrated and helpless. So we really would like to increase the time of synchronous instruction throughout the day. Students are just not able to complete their work independently. They're feeling, you know, they're already functioning well below grade level. So, you know, we really need more instructional time as opposed to the students working independently without teacher support. Another thing, too, that we have been noticing is that the two-way communication report is really indicating that the failure rate has increased during the asynchronous classes. Administrators, too, have indicated that failure reports have increased significantly with the number of Es that students are receiving now compared to other years. Students are just not completing their asynchronous instruction independently. They're having a very hard time with that, whether it's due to their lack of ability or just lack of motivation to do it on their own. And participation, it's just not working for them. Hence, you know, the need to really increase the number of, you know, increase our synchronous instruction and help students to bridge that gap. Asynchronous instruction is whole half, it's like a half-day for them to be on. And many of our students are just signing off. And if we, if we end up changing the schedule and having more synchronous time in the schedule, then students will be required to be present and sign in to that time with their teacher. So, as I had mentioned, the two-way communication, along with what we have been noticing that students are failing more classes, administrators have noticed that throughout. I looked at my quarter one this year, right now, during this, during the online instruction, and I looked at last year at this time during quarter one. And, you know, I could just speak for my building, and I know other administrators have, have been discussing this as well. Last year at this time, I had 10 sixth graders that received, that, you know, got an E or more. I had three seventh-grade students that got an E or more. And then I had 15 eighth-grade students that got an E or more, one E or more. This year, I have 36 sixth graders that are getting Es. I have 47 seventh-grade students that are getting Es and 61 eighth-grade students. So it's very concerning. We already have students that, like I, like I mentioned, that are functioning one to three years below grade level, and they really need that scaffolding. They need that teacher support. They need that intervention during, during that time. And having them work asynchronously on their own, it just doesn't work for our students. And then just the last point I'd like to address is that teachers, overall, we surveyed our teachers across the board, and I know in my building, I had 100% wanting to move forward, and then overall, I think it was what, it fought me 79 or 80% across the board from all, all schools, that they wanted to move towards this after surveying our teachers that are in favor of increasing the synchronous instruction. So this is really where we'd like to go with this and give the students the support that they need. One of the biggest challenges that I think that the teachers and the students are facing, that they continue to face during this asynchronous instruction, is a student signing in on the correct days due to the A B, the A B day schedule. They're waiting in the waiting rooms. You know, this is, this will definitely provide consistency and increase student participation and be a great segue into the hybrid schedule, creating minor adjustments when we should go back in person. I think overall, just by doing that, the three major components that I think that we'll really be addressing right now that we're finding is, as a challenge during this asynchronous, that we will be addressing is more accountability, consistency for the students and the teachers, and then, you know, the whole social-emotional component, allowing more interaction and engagement between teacher and students and students with other students, because they will be, they'll have more synchronous instruction taking place.
Okay. Ms. Radcliffe? Or I'm sorry, Ms. Sorensen?
Hi, everyone. I'm Stephanie Sorensen. I teach seventh and eighth grade, Language Arts at Lori. I'm a part of two P L Cs, and I just wanted to discuss some of the issues that the other teachers and I are experiencing across the board with the current schedule. Piggybacking off of what Reema said, the new schedule would be much more consistent for the kids and improve attendance, because it's a clear set schedule in place. Kids are still confused about what teacher they see at what time and if it's an A or B day. This morning, I got two emails from students asking me if it was an A or B day. I had four students trying to sign on to my fourth hour, thinking it was first hour. I had two students from my second hour signing into my fifth. And that's just today. This is happening all the time. Last week, I had a student spend my entire class period in the waiting room of another teacher because she thought it was an A day. And so they are confused, and they're just missing crucial instruction time as a result. Consistency is the key for the kids. And when we did that half-day schedule week, I anticipating have, I anticipated having these issues with attendance, but I didn't see that. It was the opposite. I actually had better attendance that week because that schedule emulates what kids are used to. They're seeing all their teachers every day, so even with the shorter periods, the attendance was consistent. And when we return to in-person instruction, our schedule won't be similar to what it is now. It would be more like that. So the kids will be more adjusted as well. And it's also difficult to track attendance with the current schedule, because if I see a student twice a week and they're absent twice a week, they miss a week of instruction. Whereas if I'm seeing them daily, they're more accountable. So if they miss two sessions, I can call home. It's easier to track and find out why they're absent and figure out what's happening and why they're absent. So they just, they feel more accountable to attend your class when they're seeing you every single day. I've had many conversations with the students about the remote learning, and one thing that they constantly bring to my attention and why they struggle with this is that they just miss school. They miss their teachers, they miss their friends, they miss the socialization. One kid told me last week that he misses his blocker. So these kids truly need that, and it's just so important to create that virtually as much as possible. We did start the school year online, so kids are getting to know each other, they're getting to know their teachers, and this is challenging for them. It's much easier to build the relationships and establish that rapport in the classroom. So online, a lot of kids, they just don't feel comfortable. They don't want to turn on their camera, they don't want to participate. And I think if we see them daily, they'll just overcome this hesitation, because they're more comfortable. We're able to build that rapport and see them more often, it will just naturally come. There's also more opportunities for them to speak and for them to practice speaking and other language objectives, which is just so important to the learning aspect and their socialization. It results in an improved sense of community in a remote setting, because they're getting that interaction. So like Ms. Yunus was saying, the asynchronous work, it's done independently. Kids are not interacting. And kids learn from one another as well. So if we're seeing them daily and we're providing that instruction for them, we can put them in breakout rooms, and they can work in small groups, and they can get that interaction that they really, truly need. That also allows me to pull kids that I know are struggling and give them that intervention time. There are so many kids functioning below grade level that they need that as well. So it would just be overall better for the kids to have that. One other thing I want to mention is that if we do see them daily, getting immediate feedback on their grades and this just for their, their work and their submissions, and this will just ultimately improve their grades and their knowledge, because right now what's happening, there's a lack of participation. A lot of students are not completing asynchronous assignments. So there's already a lack of feedback being given by the teachers. So if they are also completing it, it's rare that they go back into Schoology and check to see what the teachers commented and what they need to fix or why they received the grade they did. So last week, or the week before, in one of my classes, I did a T chart with the kids because I was seeing this, and I had them make a claim, pull evidence from the text, provide an analysis to support the claim. And I had them all working on the assignment in class while I was monitoring each student's work and making comments. And then I was seeing that they were pulling the wrong evidence, a few of the students. So I pulled them back together and addressed it and had to explain why this piece of evidence did not work to support the claim. And I was verbally providing that feedback and also giving each student written feedback. And the quality of what they turned in was much improved from what I was seeing prior to that lesson. And I think if we were able to give them that feedback daily, we would see such an increase in the quality of their work, and they would just be learning, truly learning. So overall, I think we found that the schedule is just not in the best interest of the students. They're not getting enough out of the remote learning because of the schedule, because of the way it's set up. And if we change it to more synchronous instruction, and if we're seeing them every day, I truly believe that we'll be able to meet the needs of all the kids, not just some of them. That's it.
Okay, great, thank you. Are there any questions, trustee Thor?
I've got three. Do you want me to go with all of them right now?
Please.
All right. And, and this isn't necessarily just at the middle school level that, that I'm addressing here. First is the idea to go to more synchronous. Would that be more work for the teachers, the way it's being proposed? I don't know if you want to answer them one at a time?
Yeah.
Well, I could just speak to, and obviously I can't speak to all the teachers, but I can just tell you, one of the teachers that I spoke to at some of the classroom visits is saying that there's still a lot of work that goes into the asynchronous. So whether you're planning for asynchronous or synchronous, it's still a lot of work, because there's a lot of videos and other things that are being implemented. So I don't know, again, I don't want to speak for everyone, and each level's a little different, but I do know I've heard, you know, that the, there's a lot of effort that's going into the asynchronous from some of them that I've, you know, we could kind of look at that. I could get back to you. I don't know if the, they want to speak, the Ms. Yunus or any of the teachers?
Mr. Yeah, Mr. Radcliffe will address this in the next slide.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. So one of the things that we looked at with this schedule was how is this really going to work, all right? And we want to see all the kids. We don't want to have the kids in front of the computer for eight hours a day. So we've devised a schedule where we have six 40-minute sessions of synchronous instruction. All right, so Monday through Friday, the teachers would be seeing all of their students and vice versa every single day of the week. All right, so the first question that comes up is now we're reducing the length of the class period, so what does that look like? So we mix up our instruction just a little bit, and we chunk our lessons a little bit more. By doing this and seeing the students every day, it gives us the opportunity to focus more on some mini lessons, putting the kids in breakout rooms, giving more individualized instruction. We're still going to focus on group work, partner projects, and the types of things that we've been doing for the entire year. But the difference is by seeing the students every day, we have a better continuity of what they're learning. Because if I see a student on Monday and then not again till Wednesday, we're spending more time, you know, restarting the learning process. By doing this daily, co-teaching still takes place in all the classrooms where we have co-teachers. That's not going to change. We've also worked into the schedule a break after every two class periods, excluding advisory. We still have a 30-minute lunch period, all right? That is not changing. Teachers are still going to have their prep hour, all right? Not only is it right, it's contractual, right? So we have to do this. But in addition to that, the teachers are being given an additional 30 minutes of prep time every day. When we met as a committee, a lot of time was spent making sure that we could put this in, because this has been something that the board, in their unwavering support of teachers through all of this, has really been pushing for, and that has not gone unnoticed, and we truly appreciate that. In addition to all of these other particulars on the schedule, Wednesdays, at the end of every day on Wednesday, there are 100 minutes set aside. And this is set aside for our MTSS meetings, our other team like P L C meetings, our parent meetings. The advantage we have to this is when we have a student who's struggling across the board in every single class. By setting this time aside, we've created the ability for all of that student's teachers to meet with the parents simultaneously, simply the same way we would do if we were in person. We'd bring mom and dad in, and we'd get all the teachers together and work as a group to solve the problems of students. 100-minute block on Wednesdays is really going to help us to be able to do that. With all of these changes, we've still managed to include an hour and 10 minutes of learning lab time every day, with the exception of Wednesdays. And this allows us to bring the students in that need that more focused instruction, all right? Someday, hopefully soon, we'll be able to see our students in person again for learning labs and for our regular classes. In the meantime, we still have to provide that environment for the kids. So by building in this hour and 10 minutes every day, we're still able to do that, and that enables the teachers to structure this time the way they feel is best for their students. Another bonus to the schedule, and I'm sure most of my teacher friends would agree with me, is the two-way communication law is no longer going to be required. We are going to be physically taking attendance with the kids every single day, all right? Also with this, because of the time we're building into the schedule, because we're seeing the kids every day, we can return to a more normal system, so that when we do eventually come back to school in a hybrid form, where our students are coming in and going to every class on the days they're in the building, they already, they're already kind of in that mode of going to six classes a day. Okay, so are there any other questions?
Trustee Thor, do you want to finish your questions?
Yeah, thanks. And I apologize, I thought everything was done. The next question is when we're talking about synchronous, and I've seen it with my own kids when I've gone into them being in lessons, it is a sea of dark screens. And if I'm a teacher, how do I know that the student's really there? How much time am I wasting calling out a student that may or may not be there? Why, again, I know it's privacy, but can we go deeper into why don't the students have to be on screen?
Yeah, I can comment on that. And I think because I've been in multiple levels of classes, I think it depends on the age of, so some classes like kindergarten, or even I would say I was in some of the high school classes that, you know, most were on, but it's a legal issue of privacy, and it's gone through a legal, we cannot, if the parent does not want it on, because we're in the home and there's other things that are going on, and the fact that other people will see into there, that we can't force it. We can encourage it, and parents can say, if a parent chooses that they want the camera on, they can contact the teacher and say, you know, I want the camera on, and then we can, you know, but we can't enforce it, and this is a legal issue. I've talked to our attorneys on that and tried to, you know, work through, we've tried to discuss it. And again, a lot of this changes, but it's because we're, you know, we'd be physically in, in their homes, basically, with things that are in the background or things going on. And, you know, so that is the advice we've, we've had from counsel. But again, because I had somebody, and, and we've had parents that actually did reach out and kind of complained on both ends. Well, I want my child to have it on. Well, you can do that then. Contact your teacher or your principal, and then if you say, yes, I want it on, then we can keep it on. But if someone does not, because we've had other parents that say they don't want it on, then we can't force that, unfortunately.
Okay, yeah, because what I kind of hear is, no student wants to be the first one, because they'll look like they're kissing up. And again, if, if I was teaching, it's like you're, you're giving a speech to an empty auditorium, but you don't know that everyone's left, and that would be frustrating to me. So I did want to get more information for that. Thank you. My final item is just more a request for information that I'll ask now, based on the presentation we just went through. Principal Yunus mentioned what's going on at, at her school. What I'd like to report on is now that we are through for, for the first marking period, how are our students performing in the virtual environment, and whether it's at the middle school level or at other levels? Are we considering changes at this time based on what we've learned since the start of, of the school year? Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Betchov?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. One is kind of tags on to yours, is that are we contemplating that we're not going to get through if we're going to do, continue on in this environment for an extended period of time, another semester or whatever? Are, are we going to be able to complete a normal school year of getting through, completing the expectations of any of the classroom work that is required to advance them on to the next grade level? Or are we going to be so far behind? When I'm hearing we've got kids who are one to three years behind in what they're showing, what they're doing right now, I mean, how are we going to start next fall if we continue to move at a pace that cannot keep up with the expectations of what the subject matter requires in order to pass on to the next level? So that's my first question. My other one is, I'm wondering, just out of mild curiosity, this really doesn't have anything to do necessarily with the teaching style or anything, but I know every morning now, in my neighborhood, and I have Wi-Fi through A T U verse, every morning, and I'm assuming it's happening because everybody's climbing on at the same time, and I lose my internet for five, 10 minutes every morning now. It's, it's, I just know it's going to happen. And I look and I see how many people are stacked up, you know, with no Wi-Fi that's in my area. So if we've got six 40-minute sessions and we're going to be taking, you know, attendance and stuff like that, and kids are having a problem, I don't know, has this been a problem for this first semester, where a lot of kids are, my next-door neighbor complained that he was having, he's in middle school, and that he was having, and, and a lot of his friends were having a problem in the beginning. I haven't talked to him recently, if it's still an issue. But if I'm losing my internet, I'm assuming everybody else is, too. Of, how much time are we losing just waiting to boot back up, so to speak, for these students?
I mean, I think we're all dealing with that. And so what I've seen when I got on, like I said, I, I think the teachers are adapting and the students to some techniques to deal with it. You know, just like today, I mean, I froze up, too. I was in my office, and it had happened. It just depends on what's going on. Teachers I've seen, like I said, they've seen them adapt, because they saw it where the sound was coming in, and it was muffled a little bit, and they said, churn off the camera, on purpose, because then, you know, so I see teachers kind of adapting, or they'll come back to the student. But yeah, we don't control the bandwidth in the internet.
Yeah, I know.
So I think, I don't know that we have a fix. I mean, it's something that would, the broader community of the internet providers has to work with us, and I, I would think that right now, it's huge. So we've, we've, we have workarounds. We've learned to deal with it, kind of thing.
Okay.
You know, like this morning, too, my, I was on with Executive Cabinet as an example, and my sound was all muffled, but it wasn't, I don't think it was the internet access initially, but I had to, I had to log off and log back in, and then it fixed it. Or sometimes you have to restart the computer.
Right.
Earlier on, I, I was finding even my own, when I was at my home in the spring, where one router was picking up, and it was booting me off. So I kind of learned that on my own with my own provider. So these are just things, I think, in this new environment that we're dealing with, until we get a better broadband, community-wise and globally, we're going to have to continue to do workarounds. So what I saw, when I came in, I saw the teachers working around those, those issues. In some places, I didn't see an issue, and others, I saw exactly what you're talking about, so.
Okay. Well, I just wondered how, how extensive it was, and
I don't know.
If we're going to go to, you know, every day, you know, six classes a day, is it going to increase rather than, and, and, and just complicate things more? And then the other thing, of course, is what are we, and I talked to you about, I wanted us to start looking at the fall, how are we going to play catch-up? Because we have to start preparing now. We know that we're going to have a lot of catching up to do. And, and how, and how do we manage that, when hopefully there's a vaccine or something that is going to help us get back to a normal classroom environment next year?
Sure. That, and that's going to be a challenge. I have that on the agenda for cabinet discussions. The reality is, is we know, when the pandemic hit in March, we've heard teachers come in here, you know, we, those several months are not like it is now. So we've improved it, because now, whereas before, if you recall, under the extended continuity
It was just getting, getting out of the year.
It was, yeah, it was, there was only like a certain number of lessons per week, and that was the time that we were dealing with that. So the reality is, is we're going to have, you know, a situation where students are behind, and we're going to have to look at the data. Dan Patterson has some data sets we can look at and
And that's going to be, that's going to be across the state. Yeah, that's going to be across the state where the gap is only widening.
Yeah, it's going to be across the nation.
We are looking at Today we pulled out
Across the world.
Yeah, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so we're looking at extended learning opportunities for students to make sure that anyone who is performing below grade level will be receiving additional interventions. As we move uh, into the spring semester, we're looking at different interventions and remediation plans so that we make sure that we meet the needs of those students. Uh, when we were asked to do the benchmark assessment K through eight, and that was a requirement by MDE and also the governor's office, uh, the intention of that was to, uh, the intent of that was to measure the gap, uh, how much learning loss there is, and how the state is going to help the school districts uh, overcome these gaps. So these are conversations that we're having with the principals and teachers, and we, we understand that there is going to be a gap as a result of the pandemic. So that's how we are uh, uh, performing based on the, the gap that's being created. And it's been only widened, we understand that. Uh, in terms of student engagement while they have the cameras on, uh, we've been talking about that too. And yes, students are not required to be on camera, but they are required to participate. So when the teacher calls on a student, even if they have the camera off, the requirement is that they are readily available to answer the questions. And these are some strategies that we are working on across the board.
I want to, can I just interject, Fatni, and, and say that really, um, that's a great question that was mentioned with the gap, and what are we going to do? And, and I really believe that moving towards asynchronous instruction is one way of already trying to bridge that gap. Uh, getting students on every single day and building that consistency and that accountability. It really stops teachers from having, when they have the A-day, B-day. Uh, when I'm in the Zoom rooms, I'm, I'm noticing that teachers are spending more time having to review what happened the day before to remind them, as opposed to the continuity of the lesson. So that in of itself, I think, really um, will provide m- more learning and more time focused on having that lesson followed through, um, as opposed to rewinding and trying to review the content that was taught two days prior. And with the um, that, with the mention of the, the cameras, I think a, a critical component here too is um, yes, you mentioned security and, and purposes and not having students be forced to put their camera on, but I think the relationship between student and teacher, and teacher and student is really critical. And that, you know, building these relationships, I know Ms. Sorenson, you could speak to that, just really talking to the kids and saying, it hurts my feelings when I can't see you, like you're an empty, you know, um, auditorium. Uh, it really hurts my feelings that I can't see your face, and I'm trying to create uh, the most, um, the most, you know, classroom-like environment, and, and you seeing me and me seeing you is critical, so help me out. And just that relationship that teachers build is really essential. And uh, I think a lot of teachers are really trying to establish that, and, and for the most part, they're, they're getting past this component of students not turning on their camera.
Trustee Mead, you have a question?
Mary Lane, Ms. Lane, go ahead.
No, no, Dr. Mead, go ahead.
Uh, I need some clarification here. Uh, the instructional people, especially the teachers, are recommending that synchronous uh, instruction be expanded. And my question is, who's blocking you? Is it the board decision to, to go to synchronous? Or are you just informing us that that's the direction you're going? Uh, what's happening here?
Dr. Malenko, please answer.
Yeah, we're informing you, we want to inform the public since we're out, that we're looking at, you know, some changes. And I guess it's a positive, because when we started this, this is something new for all of us. So we want you to know that we're revisiting it to make improvements. The other thing, and I know Jane is here, and I don't know if you want to come up and comment, but um, we're getting the input.
I appreciate that, I, I understand that you're just informing us. And I, I think instructional, the teachers, uh, they know what's working and what isn't working, this is all brand-new stuff. And so I think it's just a wonderful idea, a wonderful proposal, try it, let's see what happens with it. Um, and I hope the people in the community will support it, and let's see what happens. Maybe we'll get the better instruction. I think it's wonderful.
Dr. Malenko, when do you anticipate this change?
Well, we were looking at um, notice, she would like to, they would like to start for the sixteenth. So we have, the principals have all agreed um, at the middle school that we have enough time to get the notice out. And so we would be starting next Monday, but, you know, making sure everyone's well informed. So I made sure Ms. Farage confirmed today that she communicated with all the principals that it's enough time. Again, this is the middle school. We, you know, we looked for, and I don't know if Ms. Mazza wants to come up, but this is another example for how we're also getting input from teachers. So we surveyed teachers to get their input, and you can see the teachers are here along with Ms. Eunice, our principal. And so we, you know, appreciate, because they're the ones, like I said, you know, I went into these classes and I got to see, well, they're living it every day. Uh, and so I think, um, so we, we, we have the ability, and we said we want it consistent. So they decided as a whole middle school, going through the, through a process, to make sure that there was agreement. So it's, if it's okay, I'll ask Kurt.
Well, sure, um, thank you, and I'll just kind of jump in, it's my blue card, so we'll kind of just jump ahead. So I wanted to say hi, Dr. Malenko, President Barry and School Board Trustees. I'm Jane Mazza, DFT President. Uh, I'm seeking in support of the middle school schedule change for instruction. The middle school teachers and administrators worked together when they saw that the current schedule was not successful for the majority of the students. Dearborn Public Schools and Union have always had a strong collaboration partnership during this pandemic, and we both have had safety and our student success as our priority. Uh, DPS and DFT have had a long history of working together. We might not always agree, but we've always had good for students and fair for teachers as our main objective. I want to publicly thank all our staff for the completion of the first card marking. Teachers not only hit the ground running in September, but they were using all-new teaching and a total new, or excuse me, all-new technology and a total way of, total new way of teaching. Teachers have MacGyvered all sorts of ways to use materials they have to present new learning to students in remote teaching situations. I'm very humbled to be the DFT President and be representing all instructional staff at this time. Staff has sacrificed their own time and resources to come up with innovative and engaging lessons during this remote teaching. Our teachers continue to go above and beyond in their commitment to student learning. Thank you.
Dr. Mazza, just a quick question here. I completely agree with uh, Dr. Mead, that if our teachers are telling us, hey, this was a good plan, but we need to adjust it, I definitely would support that. From what I'm seeing, one out of five teachers said no to this. Is there, did they give you a reason why?
Well, this happened, and I, I might be a little off of my timelines because lately days kind of blend into one another.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
I want to say possibly two weeks ago, but somebody might need to correct me on that. Um, this kind of came out, they surveyed the middle school teachers, and they had middle school teachers and administrators on a committee that decided, because what happened is, middle school teachers and administrators started looking at the grades. And just as uh, Principal Lori mentioned, they were seeing all these failures. And it was like, whoa, 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 what's going on here? We've got all these kids getting E's, and this isn't what we want. Where's it happening? And it, they, as, from what they told me, they figured that it was the asynchronous time. Because basically, kids were saying, okay, on the asynchronous time, you're supposed to complete these assignments. A lot of kids weren't doing that, and they just weren't turning the stuff in, and they were turning off their computers, and they were done. So, and middle school being middle school, you know, Fortnite probably took over instead of doing geometry, you know, or language arts. So, and, and to parents, maybe parents didn't even realize what was going on. So it took us that first card of card marking to sort of work our way through this. So I had a meeting with um, all my middle school building reps, and I said, okay, are you in favor of this? And, you know, I'm not going to say a hundred percent, because there's always people, and I, I appreciate their, their reasoning too. But overall, most said, yes, this is going to be a much better plan, we're going to get to see our kids every day. This is what we need to do to have our students have success. So, so I was for it, and, you know, yeah, because that's why we're here. I mean, teachers are only here with administration to work with kids, I mean, that's why we got into this job.
Great, thank you. Trustee Elaine, I know you have a question, you may be waiting.
Oh, you know, I would like to make a comment. Um, thank you to Ms. Sorenson and Mr. Redcliffe, and to Principal Eunice. Uh, I personally feel like we were all riding horses in March, and now we're driving cars with very little training. It, it's just massive, the change that we've all experienced. So it's very disruptive to all of us, not only socially, emotionally, psychologically, mentally, I mean. It, it's been really tough. So that being said, I would just, my, my hope is, Dr. Malenko, Ms. Mazza, and Ms. Farage, and everybody else, we can only absorb so much change so fast. And if this is a good change, then we're in favor of it. I just want to caution all of us, because I've experienced the same thing with students not knowing is it A-day, B-day. I, I sat in on several classes, and lots of students are not turning on cameras, even when the teacher asks them to. And I don't know what their experiences are, but I've seen quite a few where they turn it on quickly, then they turn it off. But uh, I hope that we will not impose too much change on people too fast. Um, you know, one of the problems with uh, with the CDC was that we've had to change so much. First, we were told, don't worry about masks, then we're told, wear masks. You know, there's, there's just a lot of information coming at everyone way too fast. So uh, too many changes can be really, really hard to absorb, so I hope that we'll think about that.
Thank you, Trustee Elaine. Trustee Moser?
Yes, um, I've talked to so many students over the past month, and they're also frustrated with the amount of work that they have to do. Um, so uh, as we move to this schedule, I hope the teachers will also put that into consideration. The numbers of, of students not passing is very concerning. So I would hope that administrators would be talking to parents early on and asking them to help as well uh, with the students. Um, another point that group projects usually tend to be um, obviously more creative, something that is different than an assignment. So I also hope that teachers will be looking at that as well to compensate for missing work. So students would be inclined to work with their teammates and other times, not during uh, synchronous time to work on group projects, which can substitute um, some of the assignments. So that's just some, some of the ideas that I, I'm throwing there. But I'm, I'm really in for synchronous time, uh, so our students can learn more with their teachers. Um, the numbers are way, way too high for, for not passing.
Great, thank you. Trustee Petrov?
Yeah, mine is going to kind of tag on to Trustee Elaine's about um, change. And I don't have a pro- I, I think uh, it's probably necessary. We, we kind of anticipated that there was going to be some tweaking that was going to be required once we got into this and saw how it operated. I just want to make sure we're giving it a week's notice, so to speak. Not even quite a week, if we're, this is already the end of Monday, it's the evening. So by the time we start to inform the parents and the students for next Monday, if this is going to begin then, how are we going to be assured that everybody really gets the notice? I mean, um, are, are we, is every teacher going to make sure that every student is aware that we are? I mean, because this is, is going to be a massive shift from what we're doing right now. And are you going to lose a week of having to, like we had our soft start before? Are we going to be uh, having, having kids kind of scattered again, saying, oh, I didn't hear this, I didn't read this, or their parents saying, I missed this um, notice?
I mean, it'll be a massive communication, but I'll let Ms. Farage, since she talked to the middle school principals.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we do our ver- utmost to make sure it gets out there.
We will make sure that it's communicated through the blog. We have training tomorrow on sending individualized text messages and emails to parents. Fadia will be training the principals, because they are doing another communication regarding virtual, and they will receive this training. So it's going to go through an email, translated to each parent, and also on the blog. The students will be also informed by their teachers. The principals did want to start this plan earlier, and we had to hold off until we presented it in the board meeting. So students have heard of the plan, teachers have heard of the plan. They are kind of familiar with how the plan will look like, but we have to communicate it in multiple languages. So we will make sure that it gets to every parent and every student.
Also, during our parent meetings, we're communicating that with our parents as well, so. And, and like you mentioned, kids are already aware of this, teachers have been discussing it with them. So they're very familiar with what the schedule is going to sound and look like.
One principal also just texted me and said they're going to be doing robocalls to the families.
And, and I'll just say too, that I kind of insisted on uh, to go along with what you said with the change. And that's why we wanted to come here, because part of it, again, as Dr. Mead said, it's not to get permission, it's to, to inform people. And so we wanted to be very transparent about it, you know, honest in areas we need to improve. Uh, but I also said, we didn't want a quick change. This is going through a process, that's why I also told my team, we need to sit down with the teachers' union, we need to talk through it. We're not just going to change things on a whim, we need to do it with looking at the data, looking at, and you can see that the principal, Ms. Eunice, and the teachers today presenting, you know, some of their experiential data, along with other data from their grades. And so that's why I did put a slowdown and say, hey, because I believe they wanted to start this a while back, and we said, no, we're going to go through the process and make sure that everyone's well informed before we move on it, because we understand, um, you know, we've already had enough change.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's something that we want to be careful. Uh, but, the same token, if it's not working for students, we have
You have to.
an obligation to, to modify things as we go, because this is the first time anyone's done this, you know, situ- situation that we've had. Um, and, and all districts are struggling with similar things that we're sharing. And um, I look at, you know, Dearborn, we lead the way. So rather than continuing to do something that's not working effectively, we'll make the change, but we'll do it appropriately, bringing all the stakeholders together. I appreciate, uh, President Barry, you mentioned, uh, you know, uh, the note I read. If you read that note, it talked about how really this is a work together. It's the parents, uh, it's the students, it's the staff, it's everyone working together. So we need everyone to come together to make sure it works for students. And we also know, in some cases, you know, students have different support mechanisms in their home than others. And I think that goes to what Ms. Eunice was saying earlier. And so what we don't, we need to do things that Trustee Petrov said, is look at how are we going to get students caught up? How can we bring in, today, we just talked about bringing in another English-language development teacher for virtual students. So these are things we're going to have to look at to provide support and intervention. Now, I can tell you, when I was on the intervention group that I saw with Ms. Iring, um, it may not be the same, um, because when you're in person, but I'll tell you, there was some effective instruction going on in a small group with three students. So these are different methods we can use, so.
Absolutely, and I, Dr. Malenko, I saw that firsthand with my son when he breaks to a group with a student-teacher. And that's where most of the learning happens, um, in small instruction time. So the more that we invest in that, the better, so.
Anybody else? Trustee McDonald?
Yes, I'm um, I'm very concerned also about the uh, the failure rates. And to see that uh, the problem has been recognized, and this seems like a really good plan to me, to hopefully address this issue. Um, my question is, do we see similar problems going on in the high school with high school students?
We do, and this is being discussed with the high school principals and teachers. Ms. Shannon Peterson is leading this discussion at the high school level.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for asking.
And I meant to include that if it wasn't clear on the request for information that I had.
Yeah, you did, okay. I think you had elementary.
Yeah, and we've started working on these reports, looking at NWA and the two or more failing grades. So this report will be ready for, for the world.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? All set? Okay, thank you very much.
Can I just, can I just thank you all for um, for your time and your efforts? And, you know, I, I sat in on several of the board meetings, and the time and effort and due diligence that you've put in is really just uh, it's, you know, I, I can't thank you enough for everything that you've done. So I, I really appreciate um, time and your efforts. And thank you so much for putting students first and doing what's right by, by them. And Dr. Malenko, happy birthday to your daughter.
Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, but we sit around twice a month and make these decisions, you're out there every day.
Every day. You all look exhausted.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, we really appreciate you.